Before we get started, there were some technical glitches with regard to links during the work session. Do we know that this is being broadcast where it was? Whoops, where it was advertised to be broadcast? And linked into?
It is being broadcast, yes.
Okay. Great, with that, I will call to order the council meeting for April 28th. Clerk, will you start with a roll call, please?
Agent.
Here.
Clay.
Here.
Hallie Burton.
Here.
Sanchez.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Woodings.
Here.
All present.
Thanks. Next up on the agenda, item number two, request for approval of the minutes of April 21st from both the work session and the general evening meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of the work session and general meeting minutes of April 21st.
Second.
The motion second, Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clay.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
Thanks, and next we'll move to item three, our special business weekly update on COVID-19. Welcome, Mallory.
Madam Mayor.
Wendy, great, thanks.
Yes, I'm actually gonna do some speaking tonight. So, tonight, we have a couple of people that are gonna provide some updates on the various different things that the staff has been working around for reopening the city for COVID response. I'll start with a brief summary from last week's report, make sure there are no questions, and then Mallory will provide our update that we typically see around cases for this week. And finally, Kyle will step in and provide us the update on what we're doing around opening up the city. I believe I should be sharing a document at this point. Okay. So, hmm, perhaps I will share that slightly differently. So, on Friday, there was a report that went out, I hope you all received it, that outlined the work that we've been doing across all the work streams in the city. They're all work streams are functioning, and we are focused on our COVID response. There's a couple of highlights I wanna call out, and then I'll stand for any questions you might have. We have several new on gauge alignment tools for engagement across our citizens of Boise that have watched this week. We had Be Well Boise launch, as well as a couple of new interactive maps, one for food distribution and one for business information around opening hours, et cetera, during this COVID problem. We've also been doing quite a bit of work around our reopening frameworks, which we're gonna hear about a lot tonight. Before I hand it over to Mallory and she walks us through her updates, are there any questions on the reports that came out on Friday? Okay, I'm seeing some shaking heads, so I am gonna pass the baton and do a little driving for Mallory as she updates us.
Yep, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The kinda standard thing, these numbers, I actually will update a couple ad hoc is when I sent these slides and it wasn't yet five o'clock, so we didn't have today's numbers yet. But in the US, cases have almost reached 1 million cases, so that's a pretty significant threshold, I believe. In Idaho, it says there that yesterday nine was at, we're at 1917, today at five, we're at 1,952, so 60, no, sorry, with 60 deaths, so 35 additional cases today across the state. And within Ada County, today, we had 662 cases, so only one increase reported and one additional death at 16 deaths. So, a very slight increase in reported cases. Or not increase, but just a slight bit of new numbers in that, and so, thanks Wendy. Here's kind of the look at the trends compared to from last week to today, and I'm gonna show you this and then a couple other slides that should hopefully help set the stage for Kyle's discussion about the reopening framework. So, as you can see, we are still doing a pretty decent job from last week to this week at flattening that curve and that number of cases that we are seeing both in the state and across Ada County. And both of those, the state is still growing at a slightly faster rate than we are in the county, but they're staying pretty steady. So, next one, Wendy. So, this, I pulled a couple of stats just from the public information that's available on the state's website. Again, just to provide some context for Kyle's discussion with a few of the gating criteria that were identified in the state plan. So, one of those was based on emergency department visits, and as you can see here, this is the last two weeks of data for state, and this is statewide, but they don't have that data available at the county level yet. I know Kyle's working with the health district and some other partners on that. But this is statewide visits to the emergency department that were COVID-related, and then those that were admitted to the hospital based on those visits that were COVID-related. And again, this is just kind of the past two weeks' data to provide that snapshot similar to what the state's staging in those gating criteria are. On average, it was about 16 emergency department visits a day with an average of 1.6 admitted over that two-week timeframe. The next one. And so, along that similar line, another set of data that we have available to us currently is these new cases that have been reported, and that's another one of those gating criteria that I've kind of been tracking as we've been going along. And then, so on the left, you'll see kind of the standard graph that I've been showing the past couple weeks with the comparison of new cases in the state to new cases in the county, and kind of where we're tracking on that. And then on the right is that same kind of a scatter plot with a trend line of new cases that have been reported. And again, this is reported, not date of onset of illness, but reported in the past two weeks. So, we are seeing a slight bit of a downtrend, both here and in the previous slide with those emergency department visits. It's not a significantly, you know, downward trend, but there is that slight little bit of downward trend. And with that, we are averaging over that past two weeks, just over seven cases a day average reported in Ada County and around 29 within the state. So, that is just to provide again a little bit of that context as we look forward to reopening plans. So, I think that is all I have on that unless there's any questions about some of the data or any of those kind of other things that I've chatted about.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, thanks.
Thank you. Mallory, this may not be a question that you know the answer to, but wondering, do we know, I know across the country, once a case gets admitted to the hospital, the stay is exceptionally long compared to a typical hospital stay, somewhere in the range of 21 days. And I just wonder if we know what that is and what that means for the actual capacity. I think in this valley, we're probably in good shape, but I don't know in other places in the state.
Yeah, and I can't speak to other places in the state. From what I've heard from the hospitals on a various update calls, is that they are still feel comfortable. I have also heard that same length of stay kind of, you know, nationally in the news is being a significant length, but I have not heard anything yet as far as that impacting adversely any of their capacity or ability thus far.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So Wendy, I think that was the end of my slides.
Okay, now we have Kyle.
Thank you Wendy, and good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. So, last week, I presented to you about federal guidance on how and when we might reopen. Since then, as I think many of you know, the state has released a reopening plan as well. And we've done a great deal of work as a city over the past week to develop our own plans. Today, I wanna share with you overviews of two of our reopening frameworks. One is a reopening framework for the community, so for businesses and in other areas. And then, the second is a reopening plan for the city itself, so when will restart city services? Next slide, please Wendy. So, as I mentioned, the state released its plan last Thursday. It's one, so the state plan is what the city plans to adopt with some exceptions. So, it very much aligns with the federal guidelines that were released a couple of weeks ago, but there are a few places which I'll note later and which we differ from the state plan. It has four phases like the federal plan, and one thing I wanna note on that front is it isn't intended that necessarily you'll move from phase one, then to phase two, then phase three and phase four. What you wanna do is, in phase one, we'd be lifting some restrictions and then waiting to see what happens. If we see another outbreak or spike in cases, we might move back to a stay-home order. If not, we'd move forward potentially to phase two. And last week, what I talked to you all about was a 21-day planning horizon. And the idea was that, you know, any decision we make today will probably take two weeks before we see the real impact of that. And so, we wanted to give ourselves adequate time to be able to see the impact of our decisions and then plan for the next phase. The state and its plan has a 14-day planning horizon, and we talked a great deal this week about whether or not we wanted to adopt that. We ended up deciding that we would adopt that 14-day planning horizon. And the idea is that we wanted to, as much as possible, stay aligned with the state and other communities in our area so that folks wouldn't be confused that, you know, we would be at phase one while other folks would have already moved to phase two. And then, while the state guidelines were generally good, they lacked some detail, and I think intentionally so. So, for example, they might say a gym could open in a certain phase as long as they follow business protocols, but they don't really outline what those business protocols are. So, I think the central district health is working on guidelines specific to different industries that they're hoping to release soon, and I'm hoping that will shed some light on some of those details. Next slide, please. So, the state has a set of gating criteria it'll use to determine whether to move from one phase to the next. And you can see some of those indicators on this page, and I'll go through them just quickly with you. The first set of indicators is about the kind of prevalence of symptoms in the community. So, Mallory showed a couple of these slides for the state of Idaho, tracking the number of COVID-like illness patients visiting the emergency department, and then the number of those folks who end up getting admitted to the hospital, and there are some targets around those. The second group of metrics is around cases and testing, so the number of new cases on a daily basis and the percent of all COVID tests that are positive. And I'll mention that unfortunately, we don't have data on most of these yet for Ada County, and not even all of them for the state. The one place we do have data so far is on the number of new cases. And we're pretty close to meeting the targets for those metrics. And then the last one is around healthcare, so that the governor has a crisis standard of care order in place, the number of available ventilators, ICU beds and PPE, so intensive care unit beds and personal protective equipment, and then the number of cases among healthcare workers. I think these indicators are pretty solid, however, there isn't anything in there about, actually, you can go back Wendy, there isn't anything in those indicators about contact tracing and testing, which is considered a best practice, so that's the more indicators we're looking into getting data on. And there's always a question about, even if the indicators are correct, whether the target for each indicator is at the right level. So, for example, for the number of new cases, the state target is that there has to be less than 20 new cases daily on average, or a downward trend in new cases over the last 14 days. So, they set that target at 20 new cases. The University of Washington recently put something out that suggested the right level is something more like one new case per million residents, which would be closer to 11 new cases a day on average for Idaho. So, that target might be a little too high, and that's something we'll continue to consider. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we just don't have data for Ada County yet for most of those. But I'm working closely with central district health and representatives from Ada County and the city of Meridian and the city of Nampa and some others to get some of that data. I'm confident we will be able to do that in the next couple of weeks. And then, the other thing that I'll add is that while we don't have access to all this data yet, central district health has indicated that they think that we are meeting the state targets in our health district. Next slide, please. So, now I wanna provide an overview of the city's proposed plan. A reminder again that we are very much aligned with the state plan, except for a few key areas that I will kind of identify as we go through. So, this table that you're looking at shows a few different types of regulations, and anything in blue is something that would be a recommendation that we'd be asking folks to do, and anything in orange would be a requirement. So, that first row is showing through phase one, two, three, and four, our requirements around group gatherings. And we're saying that none, no group gatherings would be allowed in phase one, a maximum of 10 people in phase two, a maximum of 50 people in phase three, and then a maximum of 250 people in phase four. And a couple of things I'll note here that we differ from the state plan is, the state plan will likely, we haven't seen the order yet, but it will likely recommend that folks avoid groups and have group limits, while the city will likely require those group limits. And then also in phase four, the state plan will likely say that there is no maximum person limit. Any group size is okay as long as you physically distance. And in our plan, we are putting a 250-person max limit on that. And then, on the next row, physical distancing and masks. Our plan would say that distancing is required in public except household members, and that face coverings are recommended in public, and the same throughout all of those phases. And then finally, in the under-vulnerable populations, we would recommend that folks who are high-risk because they're elderly or have underlying medical conditions would shelter in place, and we recommend that for phases one and two. And then phases three and four, we'd recommend avoiding crowds. Next slide, please. So, special events aren't mentioned in the state plan at all, but since we permit them, I wanted to provide some guidance about what we think might be allowed. And again, you'll see these guidelines are very much based on the group size limits mentioned in the previous slide. So, in phase one for special events that we permit, we would say essential events only, like things that provide groceries and food, but those must be pre-order and pickup drive-through. The same thing for phase two. Again, these are heavily dependent on those group limits we talked about earlier. In phase three, we'd say events with social distancing stipulations and no groups bigger than 50 at any given time. And that small races could be allowed if there were staggered start times, no group gatherings like parties, and that there is course-monitored physical distancing stipulations. And then for phase four, we'd see events up to 250 people at a given time, and then larger races may be allowed with some of those same requirements in place. Next slide, please. And then finally, this is showing how different, when different organizations might be allowed to operate under the plan. Obviously, this is a very high-level look at this, and there's some more details involved. For example, like I mentioned earlier, bars are allowed starting in phase four. However, they'd have to have business protocols in place to operate. So, I'll just walk you through each one. So, under the plan, bars and nightclubs would open in phase four. Restaurants could open starting in phase two, however, they'd have to submit a plan to the health district that would be approved by the health district. Indoor gyms could begin operating as early as phase two. Hair salons in phase two. Large venues like movie theaters and sports venues couldn't operate until phase four. And then other businesses and places of worship could operate starting in phase one. Next slide, please.
Madam Mayor, one question.
Go ahead.
Kyle, on the phase one, if I'm understanding correctly, does that begin this Friday, May 1st, or has the governor not stated?
The governor hasn't directly stated yet. You know, one of the things that happened on the state plan is they put tentative dates on there. I wasn't a huge fan of that just because I didn't wanna place expectations on the public that we would begin necessarily this week. I think what the state is doing and what we're doing is reviewing those gating criteria. And if we think we are meeting those, then the idea is then we would move to phase one, starting as early as Friday. But I haven't heard any word from the governor's office on when that decision will be made and when that order would be released.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
One question for Kyle, looks like we're gonna change gears to Boise's plan. So, not mentioned in here is what I guess I'd call non-essential travel. People going to different parts of the state to, you know, do whatever it is that they do that's not deemed essential. Is there a way for the public to be thinking about that in the framework of the governor's plan?
Sure, that's a great question, thank you for that. That is actually included in the governor's plan, I didn't include details in my overview. But in phase one, I think the guidelines are to minimize non-essential travel and then to adhere to CDC guidelines regarding isolation following travel, which is generally that if you have traveled, that you might self-isolate for a period of time. And then, I think that continues into phase two, but is lifted in phase three and four. Of course, there's still recommendations that folks limit their travel as much as possible.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, thanks Kyle. In phase one, we've got our places of worship opening. Are we still recommending that they adhere to the group size guidelines? So, when we're talking about groups of 10, groups of 50, are we saying that places of worship still have to abide by those group rules or not so much?
I'll jump in here, this is based on the governor's plan, and he differentiated between them and other large group gatherings, so that's why it's listed this way. But we are going to recommend that there be no group gatherings above a certain size. But, and then, anything that does take place has to, I'm sorry, my dog's whining, has to adhere by social distancing guidelines. But it's hard to say, we're still waiting for the governor's business protocols for his social distancing protocols and his order to understand exactly what we need to do as a city.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, when we put our first restrictions in place, we never put in any restrictions for places of worship, did we? It was just restaurants?
We never, we never called out, the only time that we called out of facility was when we closed bars and restaurants. Everything else was subject to the social distancing order that we put in place on the, it's like the 19th or 20th, whatever that Monday was.
Sure, thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, Kyle, one more question would just be, so earlier in the slide, we showed our large events, and we had a 250-person cap, the one before that was at 50?
Um, council member Hallie Burton, thanks for that question. The limits, group limits for special events matched the group gathering limits in general. So, for phase four, the group gathering limit proposed right now is 250 folks, and that continues on for special events as well.
Do we have, do we have capacity as far as like what are, you know, what are parks that are gathering? I mean, the reason I ask this question is, if you're having an event, let's say it's in Camel's Back Park, and there's 100 people at the event, and that's not gonna be allowed, it looks like, until phase four. But on a busy Saturday, you know, we may see over 50 people in that park at one time. If it's not a special event, we're not really restricting the size of people in a park, even though it would be sort of the same had an event been organized that same size. My, do I have that correct?
That's correct. I would say that if there was a group gathering in the park regardless of it being a special event, and it was more than 50 people, that wouldn't be allowed under the current plan. So, in both cases, it wouldn't be allowed. I think it's just, in one case, we would permit that gathering, and in another case, we don't permit the gathering.
Sure, gotcha, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Kyle, a little bit of follow-up on that, I'm trying to understand the special events. Explain to me why phase one and phase two are not different. I'm assuming because 10 people are such a small number, there's no reason to make that differentiation, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Council president, exactly, that's exactly the case. Because the maximum group gathering limit is 10 folks under phase two, it just doesn't, it didn't really make sense to allow other gatherings. Theoretically, it could be allowed, but I'm not sure if we ever have ever permitted a special event with 10 people or fewer.
Yeah, and then in phase three with gatherings of up to 50, again, wanna clarify, a group gathering means within that group, do you still adhere to social distancing rules, or is the group allowed to gather without that?
Yes, so in that case, it would be both a group gathering limit, and then those folks would be required to physically distance within that group.
Okay, and now, if you look at especially smaller kid-type events, I'm thinking especially sporting ones where there might not be more than 50, will those be able to go forward in phase three, or will they still be held to phase four?
One of the things that, thanks council president, one of the things that we've talked about as it relates to city internally is kind of our play camps with parks and recreation. And I think the direction we're moving with that is, as long as you can adhere to the guidelines that we've laid out. So, group gathering sizes and ability to physically distance as much as possible, then you can operate. So, you know, in phase two, we might allow for play camps for parks and recreation to occur as long as those group sizes are smaller. So, they might split up into eight or nine youth with one instructor on one side of the park, and eight or nine youth with another instructor on another side of the park, and then those groups could expand for phases three and four.
Okay.
And I should, I wanna, I wanna jump in here. First off, the city has already said our own city offerings for youth activities will not take place in May. So, even if phase two does begin potentially in May, city programs will not be happening through May. And then, all of the things Kyle's talking about are subject to staff planning right now. No final decisions have been made, but any, any, any event, any youth sporting, and also, that's another thing we're waiting from the governor, because it's our understanding that he's going to put together some protocols related to youth activities. And it's my understanding he was trying to get at activities that care for kids so that people can get back to work. And so, anyone asking about sporting events, and we've talked, the school district and I have talked about this as well, these are the questions to ask. If you have to adhere to social distancing guidelines, are you less than, are you able to stay six feet away from each other? And I would encourage the public to look at the studies that show when people are exerting themselves, it's two to three meters in terms of how far apart you should be. We're not, we're not going there from a distancing perspective, because that's not CDC, but the science is there. And so, sport, sport gatherings are very different than how we can control the social distancing around childcare and youth camps that care for kids while people go back to work.
Yeah, and I recognize that, and that was actually why I was asking these questions, because I wanted to make sure that the public understood that there was a differentiation as well.
Madam Mayor. Also, Kyle, if this is coming in a later slide, I can wait, but how are we approaching playgrounds as a city?
This is where I'm gonna go back to, staff is working on recommendations right now. And so, this is not a, we don't have all those details.
Okay.
And the closure remains until we withdraw the closure.
Okay, thanks.
And Madam Mayor, council member, we, the goal is tomorrow during the management team to kind of walk through the draft plan and then get the mayor's approval, and then start to kind of communicate that with the public. So, we're, we're working on the kind of the more specific city unwind plan that would follow the same phases with the kind of the same tempo of the community. So, it'll literally be in the next couple of days that we can share those details with the council.
Okay, thank you, that's, I asked, that's the number one thing I hear is people hoping to get those playgrounds and really re-release some anxiety within their kids mostly, I think, but, but we got.
And I think it's really important to remind folks that the green spaces and parks are open. Go run your kids.
Right.
Just like you run your dogs, like, go run them.
Yeah.
My, I am, I am very concerned about the, the likelihood of people arriving on mass at playgrounds, at other facilities, when we open on a Friday. And so, we are going to be very thoughtful about what opens and when, and it won't, all of city facilities will not open immediately on May 1st. We, otherwise, we will see sooner than we want, the, we never wanna see it. But we will see spikes, and then we'll have to unwind, and that doesn't help reopen the economy.
All right, Kyle, I think you can go to the next slide.
All right. Wendy, I think you can advance a couple more, one more slide, and we'll move to the internal framework, there we go. So, next and finally, I'd like to give just a quick overview of our internal reopening framework. As the mayor mentioned, departments are working very hard right now in developing their own plans and determining when, in what phases things will reopen. And I wanna stress, it won't be a date when something will reopen. And I want to stress, it won't be a date when something will reopen necessarily, but which phase we plan on reopening that. Um, again, I'm going to keep it really high level and discuss, excuse me, discuss a couple of areas, city services and then public meetings. Next slide, please. So again, you can see this is still a, a draft internal framework, but you can see how we might provide services by phase. And again, the specifics are yet to be determined. But in phase one and phase two, we would likely be saying that, um, staff or services are required to be remote where possible. So, um, if we can provide a service remotely, we would continue to do that in phases one and phases two. Um, but in phase one, we might start to offer a few more in-person services. If they must be offered in person and they're very high priority services where we can physically distance. Uh, in phase two, um, we're saying that all services, uh, that must be done in person can restart if they can physically distance. And then phase three, we move to a stage in which remote service delivery is still preferred. So we still like, uh, to offer services remotely wherever possible, um, but services can restart, um, if they can physically distance. And then, of course, in phase four, all services should continue to use physical distancing practices. Next slide. And then here you can see just an over, a draft overview of how we might approach public meetings moving forward. Uh, so phase one, some of those large, uh, public meetings, uh, there's plans to have them begin remotely in early May. Uh, but then other boards and commissions might remain suspended except for emergency purposes. Uh, and phase two, we would have generally the same, uh, requirements, except for other boards and commercial, commissions might operate remotely for more time sensitive matters. Uh, and then phase three, once our group size limit lifts to 50, uh, that we'd begin 21 day noticing, um, for those large commissions uh, and try to do that in a hybrid setting. So it might be both remote and in person with some strong physical distancing requirements in place there. Um, and then finally, in phase four, uh, we might move to all boards and commissions, uh, operating with physical distancing in place and those 250 person limits as well, uh, and then considering some longer term, uh, plans around remote offerings for public meetings.
Madam Mayor. Kyle. So phase three, other boards and commissions, um, I wonder why we wouldn't go to at least a truncated schedule of meetings so that we can begin getting, um, the board input on some of the decisions that, that are going forward. Um, certainly we've proven that we can do those meetings remotely and I, is, is it a time issue with staff? Or, or what is the thinking there?
Ma- Mayor of Council, I, I, I think that is already starting to kind of naturally happen. I sent an email today to the mayor to kind of approve, uh, a special, uh, arts and history commission meeting that would be virtual just to deal with some time sensitive issues. I know the library, uh, trustees have a similar issue. So while I think this is a, you know, a good kind of linear approach type piece, I think to your point, we are going to start to see some time sensitive issues and it seems like the mayor was comfortable with, um, commit boards or commissions who had time sensitive issues, we start to entertain a virtual kind of meeting environment to allow some of that, uh, recommendations to come up to council.
And so I guess to clarify, um, in addition to time sensitive, why not in phase three begin having, say if you meet monthly, develop a schedule that's every three months or whatever, so that the commissions can begin advising staff as they do regularly about other decisions that have been put off and, and that simply are sitting out there.
Um, Madam Mayor, Council President Clegg, I think that's a fair point. We're just kind of working through this right now. I think to which boards or commissions have those type of issues. It, it is kind of a bandwidth issue between IT and then other staff to just kind of, uh, offer this an alternative venue. So, um, I think with the council's indulgence, we just need to work this issue a little bit more to understand phase two and three and which, which commissions will have more time sensitive kind of virtual meeting needs.
Yeah, I, I, there's a whole bunch of stuff on this, I think offline we should talk about because, um, there's also the reality of in phase four, which, you know, if the governor sticks with his base is relatively soon, getting 250 people in our council chambers with six feet of distance is not possible. And there's a big difference between outside and inside. So this needs some more work that I prefer we like move through and pick up again because this isn't as related to the, the timing in the next week.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we move on, I just have one more question. I know you want to get through this, but, um, I didn't see any, um, public hearings for city council mentioned on that calendar, but I know that we've talked about potentially doing some, um, some agenda items that require public hearing, but would not be contentious, public hearings. So not public hearings where it's anticipated that a lot of people would have interest, um, back on the agenda. So.
Yeah, that's, that's happening. Yeah, that's happening in, beginning in May. These are additional things. So we've already discussed the public, the council meeting, starting to pick up items. And so this was staff pointing out the additional things that we'd be adding in.
Thank you. I didn't see that on the, um, on the calendar, so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Okay, next slide, please. And, uh, just a quick look at next steps. So on that internal framework for city services, um, plant, uh, departments are working on finalizing their plans right now and then we are going to gather tomorrow to work through those and make sure we're all aligned. And depending on, uh, decisions about when phase one will start, um, some city services could start as early as May 4th. But again, that's contingent on us, um, meeting those, uh, targets that we have set. Uh, and then of course, as the mayor has mentioned, um, we're awaiting the governor's phase decision and order. Um, it's hard for us to put anything out until we see what is in the governor's order and whether or not he decides to move to phase one. Uh, and then finally, um, I'm going to continue doing some data sharing work with central district health to try and get access to some better data. Um, so we can make some informed decisions about those phases. That, uh, completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Madam Mayor, Kyle.
Nice to see you all again. Yes, Council President.
It is nice, isn't it? Um, so, uh, as I saw those slides, the real differences between what I'm seeing, that what we know of the governor's order, I know that, that we're waiting for further guidance on it. And, and what we're thinking is particularly around special events and, um, requirements rather than recommendations around social distancing guideline, like I said, requirements instead of guidelines. And within that, I, I, you know, I, it seems to me reasonable that we can stay, I, I think it's important to stay on schedule with the rest of the state to the extent we can. And so I guess the question is, is, is there more that you anticipate that will be different, uh, than those two things that seem to stand out to me?
Right now, I don't intes- excuse me, I don't anticipate other things to be different right now. And as we've said all along, ideally, we're doing this all as a state, um, but having talked with Russ at Central District Health and, um, I also recognize, as says he, that there might be times, we hope not, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't not take the steps that we need to or just move up to another phase because the rest of the state is doing it, if the county specific data tells us something different. So the, you know, we, we really need, we've got to be able to have that and Kyle's been working so closely with them to get it to make sure that, you know, what works for Boise works for Boise County. But that's not always the case. So I just, I put that out as a caveat because I want the public to understand that it, it is our hope that we progress in the same way. It's my intention right now, but we just don't know. We'll see.
But, but making it very dependent on that data piece, metrics, meeting the metrics. Thank you.
Yeah. And so in the, so we can't, we don't have an order yet because we haven't seen the governor's order. And then we will determine what, if anything, we need to do in, in our own local order. And we will, we will refer to the syndromic and epidemiological and the, what was the third piece? The hospital, um, data with regard, rather than dates, the data, to make it clear that it's really the data that's driving all this stuff.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
To that, to that same end that you were just talking about, has there been coordination between the various jurisdictions in the county? Just in case our data is looking significantly different from the state data so that we're doing something in a joint effort rather than just staying shut as a city?
Yeah, yeah. So the data will come from a county perspective. We don't have it just as a city. And so Central District Health will be collecting that data. Um, when I asked them last week if they were empowered to, um, take steps if necessary, they said yes. So, um, we will, I mean, to all, in all intents and purposes, we're going to try to coordinate. But, um, as we saw in the closure, we were willing to do things before other places were. So that again, like that we have, we have best intention of everybody doing everything together, but just can't predict exactly what will happen. And I'd say if everybody storms all of these facilities, I think it is likely we can predict that we will end up with results that we don't want to get. So we really have to be, um, still as individuals, um, be responsible, um, to think about how we're moving about, to use the recommendations that we'll have around masks. We as a city need to put together policies to protect our employees. And so there's still quite a bit of work to do.
And Councilmember Woodings, I'd add a couple of points to that. Um, one is that, um, my work in, uh, trying to retrieve some data from Central District Health is a kind of a joint efforts between City of Boise and Ada County and City of Meridian. And so the hope is that we would all, as decision makers, uh, throughout the Treasure Valley, be able to access kind of the same metrics and the same indicators and make decisions based on the same data. Uh, and then the second piece to, to piggyback on the mayor's comments is that I have some concerns that, that folks will treat phase one as if it's life back to normal, right? There are no restrictions in place and that's really not the goal with phase one. It's to lift restrictions really slowly, but still to be very smart in the way that we act, uh, as a society and make sure to still physically distance.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Sanchez.
You, um, Kyle, um, something I've been wondering about, um, do we, do we have any information about um, any increased calls, uh, or needs for mental health services from folks? I know folks are getting more and more anxious. I mean, I know 100% we're doing the right thing by having people stay home as much as possible, but, you know, I also know that, uh, you know, our state unfortunately is known for um, having high levels of mental health issues. And I'm just wondering if we're seeing any increase in that.
Councilmember Sanchez, um, I haven't seen any good data on that specifically. Um, although we are trying to track some other things, um, that, that concerns that could come about if we are staying at home for a long periods of time, tracking things like, um, domestic violence calls, uh, to the police department. I'm even trying to keep track of on occasionally Google search trends for things like depression or loneliness to see if we're seeing indicators there. I haven't seen anything strong there yet, but again, I don't have access to the really good data on that front.
And a mayor, Councilor Sanchez, um, uh, police is in constant, in a daily contact of looking at what we call welfare checks, which is just checking on people that might be in a bad situation as well as mental health calls. As, and then as well as Kyle mentioned, domestic violence, we've not seen any spike in those calls. So that's very front of mind and police is, is monitoring that on a daily basis with the 911 center. Um, so, so far we've not seen any, any big spike in, uh, trends or calls for service. And we can definitely double back with the suicide, uh, hotline as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Mayor, one, one last question, sorry.
I had a whole bunch at once. I had, was it, I think it was Councilman, was it Halliburton?
Go for it, Elaine.
Okay, okay. Mine, mine's pretty quick. Um, you said you were waiting for protocols from, um, the governor. I'm looking on the Central District Health website and they've recently added a fair number of, of new guidance.
They have the business protocols and the, um, the restaurants are bright. We are looking to determine whether or not that's what he will reference or if there's a state level thing that he's doing. Because we had asked Central District Health to start to developing those ourselves, um, locally. And then we're also waiting to determine whether or not he's differentiating between sports camps, sports teams and, and daycare play camps.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Madam Mayor. Um, again, uh, you know, thanks for, for putting this together. I appreciate that there actually aren't dates on the, on the city's plan because I think that sometimes when we see, uh, a date that says June 26th or June 28th and you start planning things for that date, it makes it, makes it pretty tough if, if that's not how it actually ends up working out. Um, I, I'm curious if there's been any conversation with, uh, with the state about, about what happens after phase four? If it's, if it's a reassessment that happens in, in phase four of like, what are we going to do next? Is it back to normal or does it go from crowds of 250 people to 30,000 people at a, a BSU football game? And if there's any guidance as far as looking at the number of, uh, the sizes of those groups and any sort of anticipation of what people should expect going forward for groups of 5,000, groups of 10,000 for the rest of the year, or if that's just a big question mark right now?
I think that I'll jump in here and say, we should not have any expectations around anything. And in terms of, we just don't know. Um, and like you gave the example of football, that's a conversation that Boise State's president and the state and the state board of ed are having or will have to have. That's not something that we will know about until they've arrived at that decision. Um, but, uh, I mean, you read the, you read what, um, everyone's looking at and it is evaluating whether or not, you know, large group gatherings such as football, um, will happen in the fall.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think I look at it from a nonprofit perspective and the, the nonprofits that are relying on major and to, um, as their major sources of income throughout the rest of the year. And, um, just trying to figure out what sort of guidance, uh, to provide to them who may have, you know, a Winter Gardens aglow or True Fort or Boise Go Head Fest or, or the other things that are out there. And, um, and so just that, I mean, I look at 250 people and I would expect that things can't go from 250 to 5,000 overnight and that there's got to be some, some steps there in between. And so I guess those are some of the, the questions I'm, uh, curious about is if, um, if there, if there's a revaluation process that happens after, during stage three or during stage four, or, or how we assess those types of things. But I, I realize that that is just such a huge question mark and so hard to predict.
Councilmember Halliburton, yeah, it, it is very hard to predict and we want to keep the framework, um, um, as, uh, constant as possible just for transparency sake. So I know folks know what to expect, but we also know that there's a whole lot of uncertainty around COVID, right? And when we get to phase three, there may be things happening that we haven't expected and, um, and we're not going to stay to the, the phased framework. If something changes, that's really important, right? What matters is the community health and so, so that can change over time.
All right. Well, thank you, Kyle. Appreciate it. And Mallory. And Wendy, it looks like we lost Wendy. All right. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I couldn't hear any background noise. We now will move into the consent agenda.
Um, Madam Mayor, uh, after noting that we do finally have a public hearing request on the consent agenda, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. You have motion, second clerk, will you call the roll?
Agent.
Yes.
Clegg.
Yes.
Hallie Burton.
Yes.
Sanchez.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Woodings.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries.
All right. And if there's nothing else to come before the council.
Madam Mayor.
It.
Uh, just before we close, I just wanted to, uh, congratulate Councilmember or Council President Clegg on knocking out a City of Trees Challenge and a Sea, uh, Tree City of the World in one week. So congratulations on, on getting that done.
Oh, thank you. Oh, thank you. I really appreciate that Councilmember Halliburton. It um feedback's been great. Uh people, we've already got 58 trees registered, so um off to a good start. All right.
That's great.
Thank you. With that, I guess I will move, we adjourn.
Second. You've got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.
Oh, I love that. Way to go.
Time to go to the grocery store.